I would like to begin this public hearing. Thank you, and welcome. Prior to starting and opening up the public hearing, I'd like to read something to the public. The Board, in its interest for the public, and residents here in the Village of Monroe, have spent much time debating about the need for a moratorium. It wasn't easy, the challenges were many, we had just come out of one over a year ago, but we had some concerns. When we took office here, myself and two of the trustees, we ran on certain issues that we felt had not been completed in the first go around of the moratorium when we adopted the zoning in June of 2017. Since then, and since the public hearing from the nineteenth, the Board has had an opportunity to speak with the planner, who originally wrote the comprehensive plan back in 2014 with the committee here in the Village of Monroe. After it was adopted, the zoning then went on, and it was adopted in 2017, and there were pieces that I felt, and two of my trustees also felt, needed to be revisited. And it was in that light that we considered the moratorium. However, after reviewing what the goals were that the moratorium would accomplish, we have decided to withdraw the local law for the moratorium. Okay? We do have some concerns, we've spoken with our planner, we've spoken with council, and we've spoken to other people in the community who we hold in regard to these matters. And as such, we've decided to withdraw the moratorium and to work within the scope of the areas that we feel need to be addressed. We'll do so on an item-by-item basis, so that we can continue with the goals that I believe everybody would recognize from the comprehensive plan that might not have gotten done, that we do feel is important, and we want to be complete about. That plan was started in 2012 and adopted in 14. By standards or by motive, it's always good to open that book up and review it. It's five years since it was adopted. So it's a good thing, it's a progressive thing, it's a positive thing. And I think it's important that the folks here recognize that and understand what this Board has in front of it, to make sure that the largest village in Orange County, and the one challenged with incredible amounts of infrastructure and traffic, and the daily grind of getting the job done each day, has to be revisited. We have to know what it is that we're doing. Takes work, it takes a lot of work. This Board has been committed to it since I've been mayor, as of yesterday was one year. I average forty-six hours per week in this position. This Board is committed to many, many projects within the scope of running this local government. As I said, it's the largest village in Orange County, it's a twelve million dollar budget, and it's serious work. So I would like to ask anyone who would like to speak as well, we thought it was important that although we did make this decision prior to the meeting, we do value everyone's opinion, both for and against the possibility of a moratorium. And the only thing I ask is that if you do come up to speak, you address the Board, you tell us what you need to say, and anybody that hears that, please not repeat it, and let somebody come up with a different idea so we can get through this meeting. I thank you for that opportunity. I open the public meeting.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add one thing? The Board is withdrawing the moratorium. So it's not a question of, you know, we may revisit it later. We may revisit, as the mayor said, some parts of the comprehensive plan. But I know the Board has moved forward aggressively with filling the what they see as gaps between the comprehensive plan as it was as it was structured, and what actually finally got into the zoning. For example, I think you all know that the Board is looking at a floor area ratio local law. That's complete, we're reviewing it now. That's one of those gaps that needed to be filled to effectuate the plans that were presented in the comprehensive plan. There are other gaps, I think the Board is looking at reinstating an architectural review board, I'm not sure about that, but I know it's been discussed. So there are other gaps, but I don't think the Board is looking at any sort of wholesale revisiting of the zoning law that was just adopted. Rather, they're looking to make sure that the comprehensive plan itself is reflected in total by the zoning as much as possible.
Okay, please. Come up to the mic, please.
I do applaud you for rescinding that moratorium. One of the concerns that I have, and I think we spoke a little bit last night about it, somewhere down the road, there's going to be a sewer moratorium happening. It's gotta happen. That sewer plant's getting close to bursting at the seams. Anybody recalls back in the mid-late nineties, when the sewer moratorium was put on, they had to build an expansion onto the sewer treatment plant. I look around, I look at one municipality that's putting foundations in the ground, left and right, that's part of the Orange County Sewer District. The last time that happened, I believe, was in ninety-five, ninety-six. And those houses were allowed to hook to the sewer because they were considered under construction, even though they were foundations that were put in years before. So history is repeating itself again. So I'm glad you're working, working through it, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Col.
Anyone else, please? Okay. Why don't we take a moment here? If anybody would consider it. Okay, if there's no further comment, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie. Let's take five, and then we'll begin the regular meeting.
I said to Jane,
Okay, just let it run.
It wasn't only English, it was Spanish. And he did that.
Before I do that, I'm going to, because I was paraphrasing from my notes. Let me just, let me go back and I'll give it to you, all right?
So you have that.
Okay.
I don't know what refers to water.
I have no idea what that is. Actually, it's more planning board.
Yeah, I'm keeping track of the time. If we go over two hours, I'll signal you, just find a place. If you think it's gonna go for another hour.
And that's what's frustrating.
After two and a half hours.
Oh, yeah, no.
Okay, then just let go.
I didn't send it to Carrie, I wanted to. So Andy has a list, and when he does the finalization, he keeps a copy on his computer. So between what you found, what you have, I think we should be able to get an inventory of everything we have. And I think the rest of them will talk up to hiccups, you not being here, me screwing up the machine, whatever, right?
Well, you do have always the audio that Ann Markoff does.
Oh, we do, yeah, no doubt.
At least, you're covered all the way.
Yeah, I mean, let's.
We not have between what I found and what you had, because it reminds me of like, really five bags of this.
Well, you gave me some information about five with six you had, plus the three you had. You gotta have at least a dozen. Andy's got something on his phone. I wanna either print it out to that printer, or I wanna take a copy of the calendar dates for the meetings. It's inside on the file cabinet. Photocopy, Andy has a list there. Film, I wanna cross off those dates.
So all the studies so far show that the only college degree that is worth taking out a student is an engineering degree. With his grades, and with the fact that he likes to pull things apart and then put them back together again, he sounds like the perfect candidate for engineering. In order, you have to get accepted as engineering. So it's almost like you need to you need to let him see what that might be.
My sister-in-law, brother-in-law came down when
Like work backwards.
She played at the end of, the beginning of March. So she came down with a cloth bag of hammy down to my two older nieces, and in them is a pair of clothes between fleece and velour, like lounging pajamas, long sleeve shirt with a Vina and pants. And I was envious, I wanted. She, she's wearing the life out of them, but, you know, it's the little things that.
No. But I still love you. Maria Jones, everybody. Maria Jones.
That's right.
No, he was talking to John Pataglia. I know. It's because he has those crazy wandering eyes.
Yeah, but I have to be honest with you, I don't I don't know that a whole lot gets done. If you're failing.
So that day.
Okay, then maybe that'll be the time. Is he gonna play?
Yeah, I have so much fun there.
So I left, and I walked up north main to the school to burn the fire, and on the way back, one of the police officers was pulled over shooting radar. So we were talking, and he was like, yeah, I had to go over, and he's like, he's a tough old man.
Get your gavel.
We had had charges against him a while back for hitting around, but he was like, yes, I got evidence.
Okay, you gotta do better than that. Come on.
Good evening. And welcome to the April second, two thousand nineteen Village Board of Trustees meeting. If we can all stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you, and welcome. Two exits, one behind you, one to the side here, take note of. First order of business is the approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve the March fifth minutes.
I'll make the motion.
I need a second, please.
I'll second. Take your pick.
Who was it?
Carrie.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any discussion, concerns, questions? Okay, call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. I need a motion to accept the minutes of March nineteenth, please.
I'll make that motion.
I need a second, okay. Any questions? Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
I wasn't here, so abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
Whatever, one of them.
All right, excuse me, let's go back, just hang on a second.
She was not here on the fifth.
I wasn't here on the fifth, not the nineteenth.
All right.
My bad.
All right, let's just go back one second real quick. March fifth. I need a motion to accept the minutes of March fifth.
I'll make the motion, oh, yeah, I'll make the motion.
I need a second.
I will second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Nay. Or abstain.
Aye.
Whatever. It's the same thing.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the minutes from March nineteenth.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Abstain. Okay. First order of business, equipment disposition, Police Department, Trustee Hul.
Yes, in a memo from Chief Melchiori, he requests, he lets us know that the following equipment was disposed of and needs to be removed from the department inventory. That's a Sharp MS four-five-zero N copier with a serial number of eight-five-zero-three-nine-three-five-seven, and an ACIS Triton modem, I put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second it.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Next order of business, resignation. Trustee Hul.
Yes, in another memo from Chief Melchiori, he asks the Board to accept the resignation letter of Jordan Trutal. She will be resigning as a part-time dispatcher, and we wish her well in whatever she does in the future. I put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Reinstatement, probationary appointment, Alex Melchiori, Trustee Hul.
Yes, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the reinstatement of Alessio Melchiori to the position of chief, uh, police chief effective April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, with an annual salary of one hundred thousand dollars. This appointment has a maximum probationary appointment of twenty-six weeks with an end date of October twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. I put that in the form of a motion.
I need a second?
I'll second.
Just to be clear, the the contract that was offered to Chief Melchiori, Alex Melchiori, is a one hundred thousand dollar contract per annum. So at twenty-six weeks, his salary is prorated to that. So it's not a hundred thousand dollar contract after twenty-six weeks in total. Okay?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie. Is Anthony and Tom here? No. Okay, I'm gonna hold off on that, all right, we'll continue it. No, that's fine, they'll be here. Yeah, I thought the public hearing was gonna last three hours. So so I asked them to come a bit later. Sorry? Okay. Next order of business, public hearing, we need to set the schedule for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen-twenty budget years, the year. We have April eleventh designated as a Thursday for a special meeting for the purposes of the public hearing on the budget. Does that work in everybody's schedule? It's a Thursday, April eleventh? Seven? So we'll have two things. One, the special meeting for the purposes of the budget, how only the budget. The purpose of the meeting is for the budget, the budget only. Right. Okay?
Okay. It's just a public hearing, that's correct.
Yes, ma'am. Old business revision to the
I will, I'll make that motion.
Sorry.
I'll second it.
So we're at April eleventh, seven PM, correct?
Correct.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Next order of business, revision to the standard workday and reporting for elected and appointed officials. At the March fifth, two thousand nineteen Board meeting, the Board of Trustees adopted a resolution for the New York State Retirement System, and on the standard workday for elected and appointed officials. Due to a clerical error, the standard workday hours that were reported for trustee Irene Conklin were incorrectly reported at one point eight-five hours, when in fact, they should have been listed as six hours. Therefore, resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe do hereby update the established standard workday policy for trustee Irene Conklin, and report the following day's work to the New York State and local employee retirement system based on the record of activities maintained and submitted by these officials to the treasurer who reports activity. Trustee Irene Conklin, standard workday hours, six. I need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie. Okay. Yes. Okay. Okay. Just one, just one minor change, and I'll just note it for you, you'll see it once I read it, okay? All right, so next order of business, the consolidation of Fossa Drive with Lois Lane. Whereas the Village of Monroe has recognized that the portion of a certain village street known as Fossa Drive, and whereas Fossa Drive is a through road and connects to Lois Lane, and whereas the Board of Trustees finds and determines that the naming of Fossa Drive and Lois Lane could cause confusion for the public and emergency services' first responders. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe hereby changes that portion of the road, the village street known as Fossa Drive, to Lois Lane. I need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Any questions? Just so we're clear, if anyone doesn't know where this is, this is up in the Timber Ridge subdivision, up off of Reed Road, which connects to the Lois Lane off of Still Road, Road. And at one time, one existed, one didn't, and then they connected. But they kept their identities, Fossa and Lois. So it was recommended, and the Board agreed, that we should revisit that, we did. Reached out to nine eleven, they concurred, there's nobody on that street that would be impacted by a call to a Fossa Lane address. And based upon that, the Board took this action tonight. So we had a first? Second?
Yes.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie. Okay. Let's continue on. Local law number eight, two thousand nineteen, increase to the membership of the planning board. Whereas introductory local law titled the mending chapter fifty-six of the Village Code to allow for an increase in planning board membership Yep. was introduced before the Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe on April second, and adopted on, oh, no.
It was introduced a long time ago, so I'm
I don't have that date. Okay, and then the adopted would be today, April second? Good? And whereas a duly published and posted hearing was held on said local law on March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, where at public discussion was heard concerning the merits of said local law, and after hearing from all those present wishing to speak and acknowledging that no written comments had been received, the Board of Trustees declared the public hearing closed on March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. And whereas the Board of Trustees determined that it is a type-two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act known as SECRE, requiring no further SECRE action. Now therefore be resolved that the introductory local law titled the mending chapter fifty-six of the Village Code to allow for an increase in planning board membership of the Village of Monroe adopted on April second, two thousand nineteen, as local law number eight, two thousand nineteen of the Village of Monroe. I need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion, question? Call a question, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there were a couple of small changes to that local law that you may want to discuss? Or if you want, I can just quickly go through this.
Yeah, sure.
There was some concern that seven years was, as we heard at the public hearing, that seven years was, in fact, a very long term for the planning board members, and that five years had traditionally been, you know, the term. So the local law was changed to keep the term of seven, of five years for seven members.
Could you repeat that again?
There was concern raised that seven years was a long term for a planning board member. So, and there was also discussion that five years has been the traditional term. So I modified the local law, consistent with those comments, to make the terms five years, to continue to be five years. It's, it's not changing the term, it's simply keeping the term as is. So, yes.
No, it's actually, it's the current term for the planning board, the members, is five years. There, there was language that indicated that the number of years that a member of the planning board would serve would be equivalent to the number of members on the planning board. However, there was legislation and opinion posted that cited that, that does not need to apply, and to apply, and that boards could, village boards or town boards, could maintain a five-year term. So there will be no change to the length of the term, it will only change the number of members on-
Is there more information, where was it posted?
The change?
Yeah.
We just made that change. I just confirmed that today.
That particular change, no.
But it's not a change.
It's not really a change.
It's reverting back to the original.
It's still five years.
You're changing the language, aren't you?
Yes, we did.
You're changing the language of the law.
We did not make substantive change to the language of the law, we merely changed the term to remain the same, which this board can do under a local law.
Excuse me, I have no idea what you mean, sorry. What was the planning board's proposal?
Of what?
Of the change.
Of the five to seven?
Yeah, I mean, we don't have anything written from you folks, whether it was this afternoon or this morning, is one thing.
Right. It may be in your mailbox, I, okay. Well, there's a mailbox for the planning board.
I think there is correspondence from this board to the planning board dating back to October of 2018 regarding the change from five to seven members.
We understand that, and I wrote a letter in October of 2018.
Right.
But this whole thing went dead until last, this past month, in March.
That's not true, sir.
Well, if we-
Sir, that is not true.
We came to the meeting last month on the 19th and gave our opinion.
And we changed the local law to keep the terms the same.
I understand that, but the planning board was not notified about that law, about changing your local law that you had on March 19th. That's the first time on plan.
My opinion is, and I've given this opinion to the board, that it's a minor change, and in fact, it's not substantive at all, because no change to the term is now being proposed. So it just remains the same.
If it was a common courtesy to send something to the planning board, put an email, that's all I'm saying, common courtesy.
Well, I, I think, Mr. Chairman of the Planning Board, I think the courtesy was extended numerous times to the planning board, I think it's a bit disingenuous frankly, to suggest that this common courtesy is not being extended by this board, when in fact, the expansion, yes, we did, and I'll take that on the chin, you got it. I'll let the public know that. But your, your, your concern over the term of seven to five years, that was just done late this afternoon, okay, which we had just decided to do, I think it's a little, you know, a little in the weeds over the fact that, yes, we did it, okay, and if we can substantiate it in local law, and we could be within that purview, I think it's okay. I will take full responsibility however, for not informing the planning board. But please don't suggest, please do not suggest that this board-
You could have been involved.
Okay, agreed, but you know what I was doing? Yeah, right, but I, but this morning, I started at 7 for the Village of Monroe, and I ended at 6, went home, came back here, okay, that was my nine-hour day here in the village.
I do ten hours.
No you don't, please, every day?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so let's move on. So let's continue on with the meeting, and we could save it for open comment.
I just apologize to the planning board, I've accepted the responsibility of it, let's not go back and forth, it doesn't look the opt, I got it. Point taken.
We've noted-
Point taken, sir, thank you.
We've noted that chairman person.
I'd just like to ask, so is it your opinion then that you want the term changed back to seven, which you didn't want on the 19th? Okay.
Well, that's really your point, isn't it? Okay, but that point was discussed and closed last week. Mr. Chairman? We've discussed that at length with you, three different occasions, you should share that with your board members, three different occasions, we spoke with you personally to discuss this very issue. What do you mean, "we did"? What does that mean? Okay, so where's the problem?
You don't live in the city.
That's fine, you had that opportunity last week in public comment, why would you disrespect this board and this process? I'm sorry?
You wanna know what the burden is?
Forget the burden, the burden's not in the language. The concern that this board has is that we wanna see, we-
You didn't like the term burden, so we took it out. We agree with your comments. You know, look, here, why don't you just take my copy of the local law if you're so upset with it?
No, well, we're just like to know what it is, we're like to get an official copy.
I just told you what, what the changes were.
And it'll be in your mailbox, to that effect, but I think to make this turn into a bit of a circus, which I don't appreciate, I don't come to your board meeting doing it, I don't appreciate it being done in my board meeting. Exactly, you're not being objective, that's exactly my point, let's move forward. Did we make a motion?
To accept it?
Did we vote on it?
Yes.
Okay, you wanna take this one, trustee?
Sure. An event application was submitted, that's the one we're doing, right?
Yep.
By Pastor Maria Jones on behalf of the Journey Church to host the Easter Icon on the grounds of Pine Tree Elementary School, 156 Pine Tree Road, Monroe, on Saturday, April 20, 2019, from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Certificate of Liability Insurance has been submitted, but the $50 application is still pending. The event application has been reviewed and signed off, and sign offs have been given by the Building Department, Police Department, Public Works. After review by the Police Department, it has been estimated that the cost for additional police protection for this event is $355, of which the Journey Church will be responsible for $71 payable 10 days prior to the event. Police services include one officer on five hours of overtime along with one officer from the B-line to assist with traffic control and parking. Vehicles are to be parked in the parking lot of Pine Tree School, with any vehicle overflow being parked on Winchester Drive. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Trustee Conklin, request to travel?
Request to travel, on, okay, result, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approved the attendance of Water Plan Operator Ernie Maybee at the 2019 Annual Water Rural Water Conference at the Training Stone Resort in Vernon, New York, on May 19 through May 21, 2019. Some of the topics covered will be climate changes, groundwater supplies, water utility management, bio augmentation, phew, algae issues, and emergency planning. The cost of attendance is $300 for the three-day seminar, an additional $495.05 for three-night hotel accommodation, for a total cost of attendance of $795.05 to be allocated from budget line F8330.472, purification, education. Mr. Maybee will be driving his village-issued water department vehicle. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Trustee Alley, Capital Reserve Fund, Building Department, vehicle?
Yep. Be it resolved that pursuant to section 6C of the General Municipal Law as amended, there is hereby established a capital reserve fund to be known as the Village of Monroe Building Department Capital Reserve Fund, here and after, Reserve Fund. The purpose of the reserve fund is to accumulate monies to finance the cost of a type of equipment. The type of equipment to be financed from the reserve fund is the acquisition of equipment and vehicles to be used by the Village of Monroe Building Department. The chief fiscal officer is hereby directed to deposit and secure the monies of this reserve fund in the manner provided by section 10 of the General Municipal Law. The chief fiscal officer may invest the monies in the reserve fund in the manner provided by section 11 of the General Municipal Law, and consistent with the investment policy of the village board. Any interest earned or capital gains realized on the money so deposited or invested shall accrue to and become part of the reserve fund. The chief fiscal officer shall account for the reserve fund in a manner which maintains the separate identity of the cash and investments of the reserve fund. Except as otherwise provided by section 6C of the General Municipal Law, expenditures from this reserve fund shall be made only for the purpose for which the reserve fund was established. No expenditure shall be made from this reserve fund without the approval of the village board, and without such additional actions or proceedings as may be required by section 6C of the GML, including a permissive referendum if required by subdivision 4 of section 6C. Further, that the chief fiscal officer is authorized to deposit to this reserve fund any monies privately donated to the village for the specific purposes of purchase of police equipment. Further, expenditure from this reserve fund is subject to permissive referendum, only if the authorization to issue obligations for the same purpose would be subject to a permissive or mandatory referendum, 6C-8. I'd like to put this in form of a motion.
Second? Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion?
Yeah, just-
Is this for building department?
Yes.
Is this for the police?
No, no, it's building, so-
Building. I didn't pick up on it.
So can we just read, yeah, we read that over.
Okay, so we're going back to, further, that the chief fiscal officer is authorized to deposit to this reserve fund any monies privately donated to the village for the specific purpose of purchase of building department equipment. Read the rest?
Nope.
Yeah, go ahead, you might as well.
Okay, further expenditure from this reserve is subject to permissive referendum, only if the authorization to issue obligations for the same purpose would be subject to a permissive or mandatory referendum, 6-C-8. I'd like to put this into a form of a motion.
I will second it.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie. Trustee Conklin?
Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorized the purchase of the Aero 100 package from Total Mapping Solutions, LLC, 5 Park Avenue, Elickville, New York, 14731, to assist with building and mapping systems to identify water lines, storm drains, and sewers throughout the Village of Monroe. The one-time package amount is $3,208 and includes the GPS unit, all corresponding equipment, and one user license. The package also includes a one-year Diamond Map subscription, and thereafter, the subscription will be $19 per month. Cost of this purchase is to be split equally between the following two budget lines, F8340.2500 and water equipment, A5110.4530 DPW equipment. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Just for the public to understand, what this tool is going to be used for is to identify all of our water system valves, storm drain system, anything that we want to identify by a GPS tool, we'll be able to do that, and so we'll have the mapping system kept up in a cloud, it's gonna be held up in Seattle and in Ohio, and we're going to enlist our DPW and our highway departments to go out and to map everything that goes on the ground, even the building, our building, anything that we want, sewer lines, gas lines, and it allows you to photograph it, it allows you to talk about its history, it allows you to, when you do service it, it allows you to take pictures, you could talk about depth, conditions on the site, who did the work, what they did, what parts were done, and it'll all be inventoried, so that historically, we know what's going on in that valve, or in that water line. So it's a great opportunity. This product came through the New York Rural Water Group as a recommendation through John Carl a while back, we reached out, we, we signed up as members, and the gentleman came down, and he was just really, really a great asset, it's run through the Department of Agriculture in the federal government, and he's been amazing for us to be able to do what we're doing, so we look forward to that. Any questions?
Call a question.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie. We need an authorization for the Village of Monroe to survey property identified as SBL 1-2-37, which is in the Town of Monroe tax map, whereas the Village of Monroe owns in fee title to 2.5 acres of real estate identified on the Town of Monroe tax map as section 1, block 2, lot 37, known as the property, and whereas the Village Board of Trustees intends to expand its open space and park system to include said property with all due haste, and whereas in order to effectuate said expansion, the Village Hall will require a current field survey for the property with monuments marking the perimeters of that property. Now therefore be it resolved that the above whereas paragraphs are incorporated herein by reference. Be it further resolved that the Village Board of Trustees directs the mayor to cause a field survey of the property to be prepared by a survey licensed in the state of New York and to cause that survey to mark the boundaries of the property with monuments known as the work. Be it further resolved that the mayor is directed to take this action with all due haste and is hereby authorized to expand an amount not to exceed $3,300 without further action of the Board of Trustees. Yep. I need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Next order of business, Java Joe's Coffee Bar LLC has requested a state liquor authority 30-day waiver from us. Whereas the Java Joe Coffee Bar LLC located at 30 Milpon Parkway in Monroe, New York, has applied for the liquor license with the New York State Liquor Authority as required by law, and whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe takes no exception to the approval of the liquor license and hereby waives its right to a 30-day hold on the license application for to- Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees waive its right to require a 30-day hold on the Java Joe's license application. I need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Call a question?
I'd just like to say that I am very excited that Java Joe's is doing so well to be able to expand their business, and I'm really happy for them, so that's a big aye for me.
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie. Is Anthony and Tom here? Okay. Yeah, so done, yep. You have an appointment there or anything?
It's on here, it's in here.
It's in your pocket.
Yes, you may.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, excuse me, I do have it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I pulled it aside. Okay. The next order of business, the appointment of full-time laborers, Anthony Badiato and Thomas Alsdorf. Resolve the Board of Trustees appoint Anthony Badiato and Thomas Alsdorf to a full-time position of labors. Mr. Badiato was hired June 6, 2018, as a seasonal laborer to assist in the department during the summer months with ground maintenance, as well as through the winter months, and has proved to be a hard worker and an asset to the department. He currently holds a CDL license. Mr. Alsdorf has completed many mechanical courses through Kamatsu and the DUTS Training Center, both Mr. Badiato and Mr. Alsdorf have been pre-approved for this position by the county, the Orange County Department of Human Resources. Effective date of employment is Wednesday, April 3, 2019, with a minimum probationary period of eight weeks, but not to exceed 52 weeks. Based on the IBW contract, their introductory salary will be $25.61 per hour until 6/11, when it will increase to $26.30, and then again to $27.30 on July 2, 2019. Is that correct, sir? Okay. I need a motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept both.
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, welcome aboard to both gentlemen. Okay, I don't have anything.
Mr. Mayor, were you going to, are you yet prepared to look for a planner to work on the zone, or to plan?
We're in the process, I don't know if we're ready yet. Trustees have anything?
I had a meeting with the farmer's market today, and we are, we will be celebrating our fifth year of the farmer's market this year, so we're pretty excited, we, we have a lot of wonderful vendors coming this year, and we're looking, we've, we finalized our logo, and it was, it's gonna be really awesome, so, looking forward to the summer and fresh veggies.
Okay, turning your mic? All good?
Just, is Pastor Maria Jones still here?
Yes.
Your fee was anonymously paid for, I don't know if anybody told you, so, well, you can keep it, it was paid for, but thank you.
Oh, you did.
It was anonymously paid for.
Great job.
Yeah. (laughing).
Okay, uh, okay, good, Carrie?
No, I have nothing to say.
Okay, public comment? I ask anybody that would like to speak, please come up to the mic.
If you could just state your name, sir.
Just say your name, sir. Animal House. John Carl, Village of Monroe. Status with that JC49 monument, we, I discussed that a while back with the board, the one that's sitting on the side of High Street, about getting that- that's sitting on the side of High Street, about getting that back down here on the old rail bed.
There's a bit of resistance from the town. Somehow they've claimed eminent domain on it, but I do agree with you, and that may be something...
Well, it's in the village right away.
Yeah. You're right. Listen, it would be a simple thing, if I owned it, I'd say, here, have it, I agree with you a thousand percent. I mean, that's the rail bed. That's Horseshoe Falls, doesn't belong out there. How it got there, I can't say. Everybody seems to do what they like out here sometimes.
Once in a while I bring it up. Are we doing spring hydrant flushing this year?
Yes.
Do you know when that's going to start? All the more reason to get yourself a permanent DPW superintendent. Shouldn't get answers like that. Well, I don't know what to tell you. You want to talk about it, we can talk about it in front of the public. You saw the crap that came out of these hydrants, you've seen it, Mayor. Start flushing, flush properly. No, it's up to the water operator, you should know your system.
Okay, John, I got it, I got the point.
Well, spend more time in Monroe than Greenwood Lake, okay? Especially during the daytime. Trailer Park, Hillside Plaza.
Yes.
That place is a total disgrace.
I reached out.
How many times have I brought it up to this board, that it looks like a third-world country in there? I walked around it last week, and I almost puked. What's going on?
Same thing that's been going on for years, John.
Well, I had the guy's feet to the fire, I had him over in Walden Court. We got a lot of that cleaned up.
It happens all the time, and I'm going to tell you, it has happened since even when you were the mayor.
I know, that's...
So it's a little, it's...
I'm just going to let it go.
No, we're not going to let it go.
No, we're not going to let it go.
We're going to do what we always do, John, which is the right thing, clean it, and do what we can.
We're not going to let it go. I mentioned that to you yesterday, this board is not going to let it go, we're not going to let anybody let it go, under any circumstances. We're going to follow the letter of the law.
I certainly hope so.
It will.
And the last thing I had on the New York Rural Conference.
Sure.
You're paying for three nights' stay up there, for two and a half days of schooling? Is that correct? Is that what I heard?
That's what I heard, three nights. Am I correct? What are the dates again, 20, 21, and 22?
19, 20, and 21, and based on the memo, it reads attendance of three days and the cost of three nights' stay. Sunday, Monday, Tuesday night is $495.05.
So it should be two nights.
Well, Monday, Monday, the classes, the classes don't start until noon, there's a golf outing in the morning.
Okay.
We're not paying for that.
That's not included in the, in the resolution.
You could leave Monday morning, and you could be up there in three hours, and you'd be ready for class by, I think it's noon time or 1:00 it starts.
And that line is allocated, so it's already been taken care of.
Let me, let me just address it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a good night.
Thank you.
I'm just, I'm not going to put up...
Anybody else would like to speak? Sir?
Hi, I'm Vince LaSalle, a few comments. First about safety. If you look at the parking lot, and I'm part of the library committee, the potholes are awful. This winter, when they plowed, they had piles of snow, which melted, would fall into potholes, and senior citizens could fall. I don't know who is responsible for the...
Which parking lot are we talking about?
Parking lot behind this building.
Yes.
As you pull in, yeah, it's disgusting, as Carl said. That area is an embarrassment, especially with the, you know, parties coming up in July, somebody could get hurt.
We've spoken with the building, not with the building owner, but the property owner, about maintaining that parking lot.
Speaking about the planning board, as a village resident, it seems that in Fiddler on the Roof, I don't want to bore you, Tevya goes to both sides, she says, this, he is right, the daughter's right, and the son's right. It sounds like the planning board, he's right, and the mayor's right. You need to find a way to communicate.
In the middle.
Maybe a meeting with the mayor on a regular basis with the chairman of the planning board, because I want the village to move on, and not get stuck in this petty stuff. If you have to, if the gentleman has to drain the hydrants, then drain them. If he says he don't need it, and one guy says you need it, find a happy medium. To end with the Y, and the safety, and I'm going to bring this up time and time again. If the issue, another gossip, is that you're afraid to be sued if you do something wrong. Well, the present situation is a legal suit waiting to happen. Even if the new road, I call it the Y road, goes in, it's safer than what's present. And if you make a decision, and you're wrong, you correct it. If the Y goes in, and you see a problem with the new road, I feel there's the Y and the staff there, and people involved will fix it. Don't be afraid to make a stand. And one last thing, as a village resident, I need to know where you guys stand on this. I come up here, and everybody's listening, but I need, before a decision is made, what's your opinion? Either a letter to the editor, or something to throw in, so we at the Y have an idea what you're thinking, what your concerns are. But silence is not working, it sets up again a communication problem. And I'm not blaming you guys, it's everybody's fault. I just want to see this Y road go, and if it's communication will solve it, let's do it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. LaSalle.
How are you? My name is Saul Brew, I'm from Harriman. The first thing I want to speak to about is a safety concern, I'm a retired NYPD sergeant, and I got to tell you something, I don't know who approved that way to make that turn to go to the Y, but I got to tell you what happened one day. I was leaving, now I live in Harriman, it would be best for me on a normal turn to make a left, I won't do it. I make the right, and then I go by Airplane Park. This is an INSPIRE program, I didn't know too much about it, but the bus made the illegal right one day with a kid on the bus. The next day, I spoke to the director of the INSPIRE program, she said, you got to talk to the director of the transportation, which I did do. So the assistant, the assistant answered the phone, I told her, this is what you're looking at. At the least, you got an illegal right-hand turn by the arrow, by the mobile station. Worst-case scenario, if I'm a sergeant in the Bronx where I was, and some kid gets hurt because she made the illegal right, the bus driver's getting locked up, endangering the welfare of a child, on top of other things. To make that left, it is a legal turn, I won't make it, that is just absolutely ludicrous. And Mayor, I was at another meeting, I'm a Woodbury resident, but I belong to the Y. And I understand what you were saying about safety, and I know Mr. DeLeo as well from Wally, he's a good guy. But if you're going to think safety, as much as you're concerned about safety coming onto the 17M, is the same safety concern to get into that road as the only natural way to really get in there, the way I see it, like what I did today when I came from further up, I took the 17 down to the 208, and then I made the right-hand turn to go in. No other turn there is what I call a natural turn. It's not good. My wife, who belonged to the Y, told me, she made the right one day, says, don't make that turn again. I drove a radio car for the better part of 21 years, I won't make that right. You make a left, you take a chance of a car coming down to 208, and you take a chance the one that has to yield by the mobile station. Recently, I heard there was an accident there with a lady that was making a left-hand turn, all right? That, I understand your safety concern, because I'm a safety org, I have two 21-year-olds and a 25-year-old. Both went through the school system here, played youth sports, I coached them in youth sports, my daughter was a cheerleader. There is, you cannot take back if something happens to a kid. We all, you heard about what happened in Jersey with a guy made a, tried to make an illegal left U-turn through the middle lane, a teacher got killed and a student got killed on the bus. So, I understand your concern for safety, because that's how I am. I remember years ago, when my daughter Jen went to, they had a thing for, not field day, kickball final, I show up, the first thing I look up on the hill, no teachers on the perimeter. So I spoke to Ms. Esposito at the time, who's the assistant principal, and I said, can I ask you a question? Why weren't any teachers up on that hill? All it takes is one second for some predator or somebody to come down and grab a kid. So I understand your whole philosophy on it, but if you're going to be consistent with safety about a road, and I'm sure you guys can work it out, I was here when Mr. DeLeo said, wow, you know, I got kids running around, but guess what? Even my wife, and for those married ones long enough know that, you know, really do husband and wife agree on a lot of things. She even said it that night when she came up, and I said I was here, they got to curb it, no, put a curb down. We all remember Mr. Cone. When I used to take my kids to Mr. Cone, that was one of the worst parking lots I ever went into. I would stand there and keep my head moving all the time, because I'd seen the way some people... We have to be real here, some people drive like idiots, and that's just the way it is. So I understand that concern, but if they do put a Egress Road over there, and you curb it, well then, if he has less space, then parents need to be parents and say, you're not going to go, you're not going past a certain point, because I find today, a lot of parents don't want to be parents. Just let little Johnny or whatever, Jane, run around, do whatever they want. But guess what? Sometimes you got to make, you got to make changes. Like I said, not to beat a dead horse. I understand the safety concern. I dealt with this for 20, 21, actually 26, including my other job, all right? Safety is paramount. We don't ever want to hear about a person getting hit. I know about the person that was killed on the 32 by Tommy, I know Tommy, and I just can't imagine what that was like. He was ruled to be okay, but bottom line is, a kid, especially a kid, I don't know if I'd be able to live with that, if that ever happened. So, second thing, this is how I see this, all right? I'm not blaming anybody, them, you. Bottom line is, what I see over here is people dragging their feet, I mean, this has been going on for too many years. I say, get together, make a decision, compromise, because this country no longer knows what the word compromise, and I'm not making this a partisan issue, because it's on both sides of the fence. What you got to do is, you got to get together and come up with a plan, and for you people that are football fans, I hate the Patriots, but like what Belichick says, do your job, get it done, or when it was, what's his name, Bo, just do it. It's got to get done, get it done. This place, I've been there about a year, Ross, Ellen, Michelle, they run a top-notch place. When you're on that treadmill, listening to music, you see, I see a lot of things going on with how they handle these kids, all the programs they run, it's a phenomenal place. It's a stapleist community, and I can't see it by any chance moving. But what I see as an observer, having grown up in the city of New York, is that I see that there's just too much dragging of the feet going on. Again, I'm not saying on your end, I'm just saying, it's just too much dragging the feet, get it done, make the compromise, get together, talk, not add each other to each other, and just, let's just get it done, that's all there is to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else in the public?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees.
Hello, Mr. LaSalle.
I'll be short tonight, because my voice is going. Thomas Ali, I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the YMCA, and I certainly want to thank the two preceding speakers that spoke about the urgency of coming to a resolution. But what I really wanted to just talk to you tonight is that it's come to our attention. It's been mentioned to us by quite a few people, that there are members of this board that believe that we made a bad decision, a bad business decision, and that is why we're in this position. And I just want to give the board a little bit of history. About three years ago, the owner of Ali Press, K&amp;M Newspapers, decided, well, before that, he had decided that he was going to wind his business down, but about three years ago, he made the decision that he was going to sell the building. He was going to put the building up for sale. And he offered it to us, but he also put it on the market. And there were two other bona fide offers that were made on the building. And the YMCA moved forward to purchase a building with the belief that we were working on the road, we had made substantial progress, we were making substantial progress with the DOT at that point, to get the Gilbert Street Extension access. So, the, on top of the $2.8 million that we invested on the property already and the building improvements, we just spent another $3 million on purchasing the building to stay in the village. And we are a little bit upset to hear that it's been classified or characterized as being a bad decision, that we invested nearly $6 million in this community, because we want to stay here. But what I said last week, or two weeks ago, about every month that goes by, it's costing us $17,500 that we can't put back into any programs, it's just paying the interest on that loan. So we wanted to clear the record that we really didn't have a choice but to buy that building if we wanted to stay in Monroe, because there was zero, absolutely zero guarantee that a new owner would have let us stay in the building. Our lease would have been ended, and we would have been at the mercy of the new owner, without any guarantee, and at that point, out $3 million. So I guess if the board wants to classify it as a bad decision, you guys can do that, but we think that we invested $6 million in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaSalle.
Anyone else in the public? I'd like to say a couple of things in response to the three comments that were taken tonight. Mr. LaSalle has mentioned safety. I heard it at the January 15 meeting, safety. So safety's on your mind, one way or the other. And that's what's on our mind, first and foremost, safety. Mr. Brew, am I saying it, sorry? Okay, so Mr. Brew has also mentioned his concern. I wasn't on the board when the project first came to the Village of Monroe, and I don't know the history, I've read extensively in the minutes for the planning board, and that's what we've been doing. January 15, and it's on YouTube, I don't know if we've got a channel to share, I'm sure there is somewhere or something, and I apologize, but you can view it. We discussed after listening to everybody, Mr. Ali spoke, Mr. Preston spoke briefly, Mr. Bedansky did as well. There were things that we learned that night, that I hadn't known prior. For instance, prior to that night, I didn't know there was a financial issue. For the very first time, I learned on January 15 that there was a financial issue, didn't know that. That, to me, is very significant, right? Prior to that, I was told that we either give the expansion, or the Y closes, leaves, was the way it was termed to me. And it wasn't only termed to me, it was also termed in discussions with Supervisor Cardone, and it was told to me on four separate occasions. Now, truly, to me, I take this really seriously, I tend to be a little passionate. I just had some words with my chairman from the planning board, I don't like that, it's not my personality, it's not who I am, it's not what this board's about. We take so seriously the responsibility of managing the largest village in Orange County, I keep repeating that. We've got 3,000 water users. We supply a billion gallons of water to the community. We do an incredible amount of work here, it takes a lot, and you have to do your due diligence, and you have to give your thought. The Y came to Monroe, I think I was told in 2009 from the notes, and opened their door on February 4, 2011. So they spent two years going through the process of getting the permission to be there, whether it was through the DOT, whether it was through the planning board, and so forth and so on. We, as a board, under formal invitation, where the Y came in on January 15, asked us to consider opening that road. That was January 15, that's two and a half months ago. You know, one of the things that I get tagged on to, because we've been through this road, the last moratorium in comprehensive plan and zoning had all gone on, we went through a moratorium. And one of the things I struggle with is that all the work that was done to get that zoning completed, had to be about 1,000 pages. My board was asked to get it done in 30 days, I wasn't the mayor at the time, and that didn't happen, obviously, just and not unlike this. So the Y comes in in '09, they open their door in '11, they operate according to the notes, they almost knew from day one there'd be an expansion, they were told by the chair and the planning board, should you expand, you will find another way out of that property. I tried to figure out the math on that, and I'll explain that. So you got permission to enter into the Y through the Gilbert Street Extension. Many people here tonight, and people in the past, have talked about that harrowing experience. Frankly, I don't know how that ever happened, to begin with, but it did, okay? And here we are. The major point for me is, I don't want to make that same mistake again, neither does anybody on this board. That takes a lot of guts, a lot of guts. You folks are here tonight, you want your Y open, because you were told, or suggested, or gossip... or gossip, or whatever, that this expansion doesn't happen, your Y leaves Monroe. That's what you're all telling me tonight. You didn't say, "Let us have the pool." You want the Y to be here. And I spoke about that expressly on January 15th, in that very same manner. I told everybody in this audience, that this board really is concerned. I understand the mission of the Y. We were invited out there about a month ago, and everybody came, Trustee Conklin could not, she works, she's a bus driver in the district, and couldn't attend. And that's fine, everybody works, everybody had to take time, it turned out it was a something or another, that, anyway, we all went out. We spent, I think, the better part of an hour and a half, learning about the programs, the, the people that were there. I met Mrs. Foley out there, and her, and her two-year-old program, I guess, I'd say two-year-old program, well, that one little boy, three months, yeah. There was one little fellow there, and, and so I was checking that out, and that was fun. And we saw where the spin class happens, and where the, where the machines are, and we looked at where the community space was, and we had a full, robust tour of the place. And then we went, and went into where the expansion's to happen. And Mr. Ollie explained where it was, Mr. Micali spoke about it, we sat down, we talked. But at the core of all of that, I had four safety concerns, four. In that hour and a half, we didn't discuss any of it. We spoke more about one, about the speed bump, somebody mentioned it, I thought I heard something earlier. I personally went on to the Gilbert Street Extension, went on to the property, I did five miles per hour. I got to the planned suggested speed bump. I stopped, paused, making that assumption that I would be jumping over the speed bump, continued on. There's another one further down in the detail of this truncated U-turn. I came back out, I got to the entrance of the Y, the paper road, crossing access, in a minute forty seconds. Anybody that knows 208 one-way, on any given afternoon, knows that they're backed up by Joe Fix-Itts, waiting for at least six to seven cycles, to get to 208, and where Crystal Runs Lab is. If you know, and I, I don't ask anybody to speak out, but if you do know, of any time in your life, that you took a shortcut through the Bagel Boys parking lot, to get from High Street and Gilbert, and missed the two lights down at the base of 208, which is there, and then the one proposed, you're gonna do it. Most people do. Everybody takes shortcuts. That's a major concern, because what'll happen is, if you're up on 208, and you're coming through, you're going to come into that Gilbert Street Extension, you're gonna enter into that Y's property. And I get so down in the, in the weeds over this, when you drive straight ahead, you see the entrance, it's a triangle of piece of glass with the doorways. I call it zero. That asphalt, that sits right outside that door, that ingress and outside of that door, is the same level as that parking lot. So, think, in my head, when I see a car traveling to get to a parking spot, they're traveling at the same plane with those tires as your feet are. There's no bumping curb, there's no sidewalk, there's no anything. You're at the same plane. Halloween in 2018, I was asked to be a judge at their, at their costume party. Unfortunately, I got there way late, I was tied up with the town food truck festival, and I got there late. But what I did notice was this, I'm sitting in my car, observing that doorway, and I see this little kid come running out in costume. Mom ain't behind him. So, in my mind, what's happening is, that car's coming down, it's coming through, he's not concerned about getting a spot in the parking lot, he's gotta get through, because he's gotta get to Chase Bank, Burger King, High Street, Gilbert Street, have a fight with the old lady, I don't know. But his mind is not there. And I want everybody to give some thought, and think about what this has done to our drivabilities in, in society. It's destroyed it. You've got people doing all kinds of stuff out there while they're driving, talking, and on, and on, and on. That's how I look at it. So, the traffic studies that were done, which, by the way, let's be clear about that, the traffic study that was done, was initially done for Smith Farm. Then, the Y approached them and asked to be included in that study for the traffic count, so that they could know that the warrant for that traffic light would be appropriate and correct. Now, I'm probably understating it, I may be misstating it, but that's the essential part of this. At the end of the day, I'm not looking at the traffic study, because that's a science. They stick it in the model, and they, they said, "Go." And that thing runs, and cars are moving, and traffic lights are blinking, and everything's happening in this computer-based model. I'm looking at boots-on-the-ground, real life. And I'm saying, somebody coming through that parking lot is not thinking about the people that are pulling out of that parking lot spot, and not thinking about the kids that are running out into that parking lot. Mom's got Mary on the arm, and Timmy's running in the door. That's a concern for me. When they come back out, they get to the trail. Now, let's think about that. Has anybody ever run into that 208 traffic light, where they go into 17M? You're stuck at the light, and you see it's turning yellow, you don't want to wait for another red one, so you go forward. Well, you've seen somebody do that. But they don't make it all the way across, they're actually stuck in the middle now. So, now the back end of their car is sitting on the westbound 17M side. That's a problem. That's a major problem. And I see that down there as well happening. Let's say that car's coming out, and there's a red light exiting the Y. Three cars are sitting there. There's not a lot of room between the face of the stop bar at 17M for the Y, and where the trail entrance is. Let's say it's, I don't know, and I always defer to Mr. Ollie, because he knows the numbers, maybe four cars. At that point, then, you're back on to the trail. Are people going to be courteous, and say, "You know what, I see a car there, stopped, let me stay back off the trail, and allow that continuation of, of whatever activity's going on. When that changes, I'll continue over it." I don't know, that's a concern, excuse me. The third aspect of this, and I know it was to make accommodations for the two adjoining properties, but Wally's was given four parking spots, to allow additional parking for their clientele. And when you pull in, you're gonna be parallel to that sidewalk. I went out and measured it, from what I call Wally's afterdeck, to where the curb and sidewalk is at the laundromat, and the distance between each. Okay? It's a driveway. In that driveway, they're going to have four cars being parked in a parking spot, that have to back into the afterdeck, and then into the lane of traffic, which is the Y's egress. That doesn't happen if anything is going on there, that boy or that person is sitting there, waiting for that to change, that event. Same thing coming in, somebody coming down from the laundromat, they want to get out, and they want to use the traffic device to safely get out, I get it, they got a 17M, they can't make a left, they gotta go down to the right. So, the same thing happens again. They're gonna sit there, and they're gonna wait for that traffic to clear, or somebody coming around that corner, coming into the Y. That's a problem. The fourth major issue for me, is that there is, on average, 4,200 cars coming around that place, in a 24-hour cycle, each direction. I use the gas station right there, the mobile station, I cannot make a left turn. The site clearance over that 17M light is horrendous. If you're standing at the mobile station, looking that way, I tell you, you don't know that car's coming until it's there at the crown. That's a problem, because from that crown, that traffic light, to the proposed traffic light, I thought it was 750 to 1,000, so I made an assumption with Mr. Ollie, I checked it, it's 638 feet. And in that 638 feet, I've got nine driveway cuts and 15 businesses moving in and out of there. Anybody that tells me that they haven't experienced a real difficult issue trying to turn out, there's no more courtesy, when people are coming down, that traffic always moved westbound 17M. Now, there'll be a device stopping it. If it backs up, no one's leaving Mobile, no one's leaving Freeman's, no one's leaving the laundromat, no one's leaving Jacob Wayback. It's gonna happen. It is going to happen, make no mistake about that. And that's just because there's a lot of people, and there's a lot of services, and a lot of things going on. So, I look at it from those four points. When we went into the Y to ask those questions, or to listen to their, their answers, it never changed the conversation. When we were invited in, I made a big assumption, I'm gonna let them speak, I'm not here, I'm here to listen. What I learned about was their programs, which I had a pretty good appreciation of it, and I learned about some other aspects, but I did not hear about how they were going to abate. Mr. Ollie did address that the most modern, or the most recent technologies is being utilized in these four aspects of my concerns. I couldn't see it, this board doesn't see it, and they have major concerns. So, I wanted to see how they're gonna be concerned, how they're gonna be addressed. They weren't addressed. That hasn't changed, that narrative, that conversation hasn't changed, in that spot. Now, I wanted to look at it in a much bigger picture. I tend to be more of a macro guy. I understand the Y's got their issue, but there's other things going on out there. Anybody that goes up 208, makes a left-hand turn by Scutti-Munk, it's, it's ridiculous. That, that left-hand turn has been there since probably the 20s.
I must be honest, you make a good point. Here we go again, he's right, and you're right. I'm gonna throw this out, if the state put in that mess, can't we call Schofis and the legislature and say, "Stop. The village board wants that area fixed, the Y wants that area fixed, then the issue with the road becomes northern part." Can't we get that mess, where people cut through a mobile, then they come here? Maybe that's the issue, is to fix that, instead of, and we work together, the Y knew, we called Schofis, get his butt down here, we get the Republican, get down there, the state put that in, the state fixes it, the Y doesn't have to pay for it, my village taxes don't have to pay. Maybe that's the answer, we should make a point.
And I agree, that is the answer. That is the answer. Mr. Ollie's gonna speak in a moment and tell you it's not, but I'm gonna tell you it is. And I'm gonna tell you, I spoke with Senator Schofis, and I've spoken with Brad Bennett's office. I, as I said to you, I look at the macro. I don't want to just solve the Y's, Y's problem, I want to solve that whole concoct that's up there. I've never seen anything like it in my life. If you take an aerial picture of it after 1960, it looks the same.
And it cuts through the mobile.
It cuts through the mobile after they purchased gas, I got all that. And we're actually looking at it from a municipality right now, we're looking at it to say, "How do we deal with that?" Because the cut across, if you're in the mobile station, and you want to get out, to get on to 208 heading north, you gotta hope that the guy that's at the stop bar, facing toward North Main Street, at the light, that he's gonna be able to have the courtesy to push back, but you know he doesn't. You know why? Because the guy behind him, came right up behind him, and blocked the egress for the mobile station.
Then we need the planning board to sit down with you and get their support, and the three, you guys, the planning board, and Schofis, work together for my village and my Y.
Yes, there's about 10 stakeholders here. Honestly, there are. And that will happen. The county is encouraged by all this. They came out and met me on site, they met Supervisor Cardone, who brokered the meeting. We got their, their four, their legislators came down, their, the gentleman who runs their DPW came in. There are a lot of people that are, that are aware of this, and, and I kid you not, I spent a day in Albany on this matter. I spent the following Friday on this matter, here in the village. This board has been doing enormous amounts of work, at the request of you, because we do agree in safety, we do agree in the benefit of the Y. There was a woman that came, didn't come, her son came here, I spoke about this on January 15th. This young man has benefited immensely from the Y, and the efforts, and, and the programs that he's been through. He has gotten so confident, he's just a great young man. By accident, not by accident, by design, I think, as I come to find out, didn't know it then, when I got the letter, he came in and asked for a meeting, and I gave him an hour and a half, him and his mom, they came in here. And they wrote about it, anybody who's a Facebook lover, I'm not, would have read that comment she made. And there was an exchange of some comments, some speaking about me, and some speaking about what that woman learned that day. And she had a much clearer understanding of the situation. None of this has changed, but I do agree with you, in 100%, and I asked on January 15th for that time, the YMCA has been part of this community, through the planning board, through the operation, to this moment, for 11 years. Pretty close, it would take a few months. They came in '09, they opened in '11. You know, somebody said, you know, this has been going on for, for a long time, we've had it two and a half months. It's been suggested that this board has been on board with this all along. Some people have said, you know, you brought it up earlier, about, you know, you heard this, there's a rumor here, Mr. Ollie mentioned one about the financial. Listen, at the end of the day, whether it was a good financial idea, or a bad one, it makes no difference. It's pointless. At the end of the day, I am concerned about those kids that inspire, I'm, I'm concerned about Timmy walking out of that Y, when Mary's still inside, saying goodbye to Harry, all of that concerns me. And I've got to, as the CEO of this corporation, I've got to be cognizant of that. Sure, I could turn, I could say, "You know what? Granted." And goodnight, and go home, and forget about all of it. I won't do it. It's come at a tremendous expense. The point being, is that we have a job to do. We've gotten two, approximately two and a half months, everyone here has a job to do. Everybody has a life, everybody has family. As I said to you in the beginning of this meeting, I spent 46 hours, on average, some would accuse me of micromanagement, and some would say, "You know what? It's a fresh pair of eyes." And I appreciate it, and I look forward to working with them. I've been in my industry for 37 years, I've worked with children for 10. I have a lot of things to put on the table and offer, this community, and that's why I ran. Okay? So, if you think you know the answers or the truth about this board, 782-8341, and you ask, "I want a meeting with the mayor," or any of this board, and we'll do it. I'll come to the Y and make a presentation on these very things. The innuendos, and the nonsense, and the subjections that we have to deal with, on somebody who just creates a narrative, is, is just patently false. And at the end of the day, somebody said to me just recently, just Sunday, actually, "Why did you rescind the approval?" Anybody that knows what that definition means, means to take back what you were given. We didn't give you anything. I know the former administration didn't. There was no formal motion, and if there was, the Y wouldn't be here tonight, you all would be home. There was no formalization of that. The only thing you folks had as of 2016 was a county permission to cross that rail trail. You just got the state DOT in September 12, 2018, six and a half months ago. Nobody talks about that. State didn't even want to talk to you in 2009, no, you're not gonna have it. Nobody talks about that. But you come to this door, and you want to talk about it, and I don't, I encourage it. I expect respectful dialogue, I expect courtesy. I'm also a Bronx boy, I grew up where, you know, there was 40 kids in three houses. But at the end of the day, we have a responsibility, we took an oath. And I'm not, and I don't think any of this board wants to dispute this, gonna subvert that for the benefit of one group of people, because of what their concerns are. I can't speak to the Y leaving, that's what they've said, I don't want to speak to that. Financially aside, it's not my business, not my business to sit down with Orange Trust and say, "Hey, what's happening here? What happened? How did it happen?" That's not my business. My concern is the safety of all you, those kids on the bus. That's my concern. To be able to go in there, enjoy a swim, go in, enjoy this, go and do that, and then go home safely. That's the bottom line for us. Have I misstated that in any way?
Nope. Nope. Mr. LaSalle, you brought up probably the longest four-letter word known to government, and that is compromise. And, and it is, it's, it's a difficult thing to do, but it's also extraordinarily time-consuming. Mr. Mayor has detailed, I, I want to say, at least for me, all of the concerns that I have, I don't know if I speak for the rest of the board, if it reflects their concerns, but these are issues. It would be very easy for us to just end it, and say, at least from my perspective, "I'm sorry, but I can't grant that to you." That's not what we want to do. We don't want to turn you away. We, we want to keep the Y, we don't want to say no to the Y, but we're trying to find an answer, and, and a compromise that's going to make it beneficial for the Y, and safe for the village. And it's taking some time. I mean, I have read, and reread, and noted, and annotated, and highlighted every document that I've gotten regarding engineers' reports, and, and minute, meeting minutes, and compared them, I found inconsistencies in the traffic data. I found one set of traffic data where the, the current, at the time, in 2015, in 2015, the traffic data for the current 17M flow, east and west, was in excess of the projected traffic flow, should the Y be given access to the paper road. How is that possible? How, how, how could those numbers be so off? And then comparing it to present-day numbers, the Monroe Police Department routinely does speed checks on all of the major roads here, some of them show you the speed that you're doing, and then you slow down, so that that number stops blinking at you, and others don't show you the speed, you don't even know that you're being, that you're being counted. And I'm, I'm comparing them now, I'm getting into that data, comparing those numbers to figure out exactly what comparison we're looking at. Because all of this creates the picture, the full picture, and that's what we're trying to see. You know, we've examined the trees, and now we're looking at the forest. And that compromise is, it's coming, I promise you, it's coming.
I just want to speak to character. I've worked under now two administrations. And I'm going to tell you, I've never, I've never met anybody as dedicated as Mayor Dwyer. He goes, he has no family life. I mean, he literally spends all of his time consumed with what is happening in this village. He spends weekends, nights away from his mother, his wife, his son, for you guys. And I hear all this ridiculous stuff about him, how he doesn't want the Y and he has a personal issue with the Y. It couldn't be further from the truth. I saw this man standing in the pouring rain, was it Friday? I was in my school bus picking up kids from ShopRite and I'm tuteling down 208. And there is Mayor Dwyer, standing in his yellow raincoat in the pouring rain with two people from, I believe it was Creighton Manning. Trying to figure out another route for the Y, which by the way, isn't really our issue. That's not what we're supposed to be doing, but it's what he's doing. Because he wants that for you guys. He's not saying, you're not getting the paper road, so you're not getting anything. He's gone above that. He's spending endless hours, taking time and money away from him personally to try to make this work for you guys. So that's what you really need to think about is his character. Because any other administration would say, yes or no, thank you, goodbye. That's not what he's doing. And I'm proud to be with these people because they're all incredible individuals who have also taken time away from their family to try to make this work for everybody. So, that being said, take it easy.
Mr. Ali, do you want to speak?
Yes, I do. I am certainly not trying to be antagonistic, Mr. Dwyer, but there are several inaccurate facts that you just stated. Number one is that you and I, Ira Bedansky and Ross Micali, met coming up on just about a year now. It's, I don't remember the date. It was late April, early May of last year.
It was June, it was right here and it was just you and Mr. Bedansky. Mr. Micali was not here.
Yes, he was. Yes, he was.
Okay.
It was the three of us. We sat right here, rolled out the plans. We gave you a lot of plans.
Yep.
So the, it's really, I'm going to say disingenuous to say that you've only had it two and a half months. Because in, following that meeting, whether it was May or June, sometime in July, you communicated to us that we should, the Y, should speak to the town about gaining access through ONR.
Yes.
So...
And Mr. Bedansky, at that time, said to me, he was also here, said, Neil, I don't want to go over the trail. I want to use the ONR side. I want to use that road. I never did. Sandy Leonard gave it to us, Harley-Dole's took it back. Jimbo Micali offered some help. That's where we got there. He says, if you could get this done with me? I said, let's get a meeting with Mr. Cardone. Mr. Cardone comes in, we meet again. You correct me if I'm wrong. He says, listen, I don't really see an issue. Let me bring it back to my board, meeting the town side, and let's see what they think. January 4th, 2019, Mr. Bedansky calls me and says, we have a problem. I said, what's the problem? They want to give us a license. I said, what do you mean a license? He says, they want to give it to us for five years with the possibility of taking it back. He said, they may even consider a two-year option, but that's it. Mr. Bedansky says, that's not going to work for him. Mr. Cardone says, listen, that's what I can do for you.
I'll dispute the dates, but it's not important. The content is that we could not reach a deal that we know would not have been acceptable to your planning board.
No argument.
A five-year license.
Absolutely no argument.
So this really started, if it was May or June, it started nine months ago, not two and a half months ago.
Right.
We asked for the meeting on June 15th. We requested to come here after the meeting.
It was June 15th, right?
January 15th.
You mentioned April and May earlier.
The meeting, the meeting that we had here at January 15th. We asked for that after the meeting that we had with you and Supervisor Cardone up at his office. Didn't really lead to any resolution on that access. So we came back here to ask for what we had been working on for the last few years from, with the crossing of the rail trail. So we've been open to other avenues, no pun intended, of access to the property. However, each time that we've looked at these other accesses, it has been a wild goose chase. We have not been, three times.
I'm just asking, you know, what were the reasons for those goose chases? I'm just, and where were they?
I'm going to say roughly 2012 or 13. I don't remember what year Mr. Dole's became supervisor, but we had discussions with Supervisor Leonard before then.
Yeah, I'm with you on that.
And that went no place.
Yeah.
Then, well, that was one of the wild goose chases. That we went that way looking for that access, we couldn't get it. We tried to get it with Supervisor Dole's. To the point that plans were developed that had the access. There was going to be a roadway in development of parkland on that property. And for whatever reason, the town couldn't make that happen either. Wasn't the Y that didn't try.
No, I wouldn't argue that.
And it was the town. So a third time, a third, as I have phrased it, a wild goose chase, is that on your suggestion, we went back to the town. I met with the highway superintendent, I met with the town engineer and the supervisor out there. We mapped out a feasible plan that we would have improved, an 1,100-foot-long roadway through that property. But the town could not offer us anything more than a five-year license agreement.
Just to, for clear and the folks know, what was the reason behind that? Did they tell you? Behind the five-year deal only?
It was offered to us as a five-year deal. That's all.
Okay. No reason, just that's the deal.
That was the deal that was, that was offered.
Thank you. I'm open for anything, Mr. LaSalle. The Y, you know, I agree with you 100%. Mr. Ali and the board can sit back down again and I could ask my planning board to come in if they chose to, wanted to, and I hope they would. I'm up for anything.
Now, some of the other factual inaccuracies is that the Y back in 2009 had hired WSP cells to conduct a mini-traffic study and evaluate different alternatives to access to the property.
Mr. Ali, I'm just going to ask you to pause there a second. I'll concede that. I wasn't trying to suggest that nothing was done. Excuse me, I just want to make the point, so maybe we could just end the rhetoric. What I'm trying to say is, and I do understand about WSP because I read their study. What I was referring to is just that you were not part of that traffic warrant until what year?
The 2016.
That's all I said, and that's all I meant.
No, no. Here's some other factual inaccuracies, is that you said that we asked to be part of the Smith Farm.
That's what I was told.
No, that is completely inaccurate. Smith Farm did a, did a traffic study as part of their environmental impact statement. And the finding statement required them to put the light in at Wally's.
Absolutely. It's nothing to do with you.
Now...
Agreed.
2016, we undertook a traffic study because we were back before your planning board, again by WSP cells, completely separate from Smith Farm, completely separate from Crystal Run Healthcare, which was done by, I believe, Mazer. I don't know who did the Smith Farm. And it was the village that hired Creighton Manning that we came together with to look at everything that was going on in the 17M corridor as a participant. We didn't ask to be in that study.
A participant?
We weren't asked, no, we were asked by the village.
To be a participant?
To be a participant in that.
I stand corrected.
Yeah, so...
Listen, I'm on board with everything you're saying and I'll concede anything you'd like to offer here. I don't want to, I don't want to just keep going back and forth. I got it. It's not really the point. The point still stands that this board has four major concerns about that access crossing. That has not been mitigated. And I wish it could be, but at this juncture, I don't see it happening. And let me just go back to WSP a second, just so we're clear about that. So I read that study. And the one thing, and we haven't, the last piece was, we were actually going to set up a meeting with our planning board to understand something. But the planning board had asked that if you expanded, and since you're the applicant, you would know this, should you expand, you're going to need a second egress. Were you told that?
Yes, we were.
Okay. WSP in their study says that 90% of the traffic generated by the Y will come out, should that be granted, will come out onto 17M. 90%.
I believe you were correct in that statement.
That's right, exactly. So what this board is just trying to wrap ourselves around is when we have one ingress egress allowing you to purpose to do the Y off the Gilbert Street Extension, and you function based on numbers that you gave to the planning board when you first applied in '09, '10, or whatever. WSP says, should you expand, you're going to increase, and I think Mr. Bedansky suggested, 25%. The planning board has asked you to find a second way out of that place. Okay? If 90% of the traffic is going to head out 17M, doesn't that really negate the second access and become the primary access?
The purpose of the second access was, yeah, thank you. The, was to rectify the existing Gilbert Street Extension. So...
So you think in your estimation that the 17M cross, the proposed cross, is to mitigate what currently is happening on Gilbert Street Extension? Or to allow its continuation of use?
I think that we are fools if we don't look at what's happening out at that intersection today and want to improve it. We agree with that. And we, but we also know that the, because you've had your planning board engineers look at it, you've had your traffic consultants look at it, you've had the New York State DOT, you've had the DPW, you've had Orange County Planning, all look at it and agree that of all the alternatives that are available, maybe they're not perfect alternatives. We understand that. And that's why we've said at the last meeting that we are willing to look at it down the road and make improvements, make adjustments. But nevertheless, the 2009 planning board endorsed and recommended the crossing of the rail trail. Your own comprehensive plan that you said was adopted just coming up on five years ago suggested crossing the rail trail. The county legislature voted unanimously for it. The county DPW has looked at it, the state DOT has looked at it, and they all believe that it is a very feasible and viable alternative.
What is the criteria for their feasible and viable? What would you say their criteria is?
Safety.
Safety. Okay.
That's number one. Number two is moving traffic.
Right.
With unnecessary delays. And Mr. Mayor, I will agree with you that of all of your traffic problems, the left turn onto Scunney Monk Street Road is the worst, is by far the worst.
Sure.
But you know what? That's not our traffic. That's not the Y traffic. That's the traffic that's already in the village there. We're not causing that problem. But we are trying to resolve that for a viable institution in the village. And the one thing I do want to apprise the board of is that over the last several weeks, we've been having discussions with Mr. DeLeo at Wally's. And if you want to come to the planning board meeting next week, we're going to show the planning board what we've, at least tentatively, have worked out with Mr. DeLeo, where we can, just by shifting the parking back a little bit, still having the same type of configuration, which you described it as being a very narrow backing up and it's the same parking standards that's used in the, in any of the, you know, your commercial developments. But we can get to eight there, which are two more than what he has. So, and it would move it back a little bit further from the intersection. But these are the things that are planning board matters. They're not, they're really not village board matters. What we're here for and what we really feel the board, and I think what most of the people here feel the board should be doing, is determine, let the planning board do their planning and you decide whether or not you're going to grant us the easement. That's what we're looking for. If the planning board doesn't like it, they'll throw it out. They'll tell us that it's no good.
Listen, I'm not, the planning board, listen...
But we can't get there. We can't get there with the cloud hanging over us that we don't know where we're going.
What cloud? You want us to give you a determination?
The cloud of uncertainty of what decision this board's going to make.
All right, so you're not saying that you're being prevented from going to the planning board now, are you?
No, we actually decided after the last meeting.
To go to the planning board.
To go to the planning board, to bring them up to speed.
Okay.
However, we had been instructed in the past, don't come to us until you have your access. And without you guys, we really don't have an access. Even though we have all the other approvals, if we don't have the easement from you guys, we don't have the access, right? Really? I mean, the other approvals aren't good.
I won't argue that.
We have that. So that's why we didn't go.
The planning board runs their business. They do what they do. That's their job, they do it. I don't interfere with their business. I don't step in. I attend occasionally. I need to speak to them, I do.
My last point is that the, regarding the communications. Yes, we gave you a tour of the Y. And when we sat down at the table after showing you the expansion, we had a question. And I described it as being the elephant in the room. I said, let's talk about the access. And we had one question from you guys, just one question. And then, now, I'm not criticizing you for scheduling other things that day, but in a matter of several minutes, you guys had to leave to attend another meeting. So we have, to this day, we haven't had that discussion of, really, sit down. What is it specifically? What are the things that you would like us to look at to improve? I asked that question of you guys at that February 18th meeting. And I believe that Trustee Conklin wasn't there because of illness, because it was a, it was a, it was a school holiday that day. It was Washington's Day, so... So the, but we have tried to be factual in everything that we have presented to the board. If we have been inaccurate, we've corrected that. We've restated it and made it clear. But we need to have the communications with you. We need to sit down because the compromise that Trustee Hool talks about can only happen if we sit down and talk about it. And we are still waiting for that to happen.
So, all right.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. And just to circle back on Mr. Ali, his point, and it's well-taken. At the end of the day, we want to find solutions to Mr. LaSalle's point, to Mr. Bruce's point, to get it done. We want to do just that. But the worst thing you can do when you go into negotiations is go into something when you don't know what you're talking about and enter into a room. Sir?
I've got a question for you. And this is informational because I don't know.
Sure.
The second egress road, is this an insurance thing? What I mean by that is, God forbid we pull there, because I responded in the 5:00 one day with a chlorine leak. So all the emergency vehicles had to get in there and evacuate that pool. I think, I believe it's YMCA down in the Bronx. Is that for purposes of insurance, that God forbid if something happens, that emergency vehicles can get in there and ezea? Then come there, I'm asking you, I don't know. Is that what this is about?
No, I wouldn't say so. And I'll let Mr. Ali answer the question, but I believe the purpose of this is to allow people to entrance and exit out of the Y in a safe manner.
Here's my point. If you don't want to make that a primary road, why not restrict the traffic to emergency vehicles, maybe even by apartment-only school buses? And nobody else goes there? Then what you do in the initiative with the Monroe Police, set up like a checkpoint thing for those to violate it, warning it the first time, second time, you're getting back. The word will get around here, believe me, small town, small area, that if you take that road, because I live in Harriman by Brookside Development, they make my deal with the Mercedeses, where people are allowed to go in there to Mercedes, but if you continue with to my development, it says, do not enter. You will get, I'm challenged, I think a $200-something dollar summons to go through that road to connect into Melody Lane or to Brookside Townhouse.
Because that sounds somebody there, one.
Well, at the beginning, to institute, to start a program to get the word out that this is not for you just to cut through to go to Bourbon King or whatever it is. You go through, you're going to get written up, and we're talking about a $200-$300 summons. That's what I know they're doing in Harriman, where people continuing to go past the sign where the Mercedes Benz dealership is.
Sure.
And I've already walked my, excuse me, I've walked my door and I say, don't even think about it because you're going to get... I'm not saying, I don't, the cop is there, but I've actually even seen the chief of the Harriman police sitting there himself, sitting there waiting to see if anybody's coming in that way. So in order to get, again, have to be repetitive, to get that egress road and it does become a primary road, then restrict the traffic that can go in there, thus creating less incidents for possibility of some kids from the ice cream place or whatever.
Right.
That's what, you know, like, again, I don't know about what the purpose is. Is an insurance company wanting that in order to ensure the fact that you now have a swimming pool, we need to have a second road that's more accessible to emergency vehicles, especially the firehouses right there?
Mr. Ali?
My understanding of the planning board's requirement is to provide a second vehicular access to it. It's not a, it's not a safety, you know, fire or emergency response. However, some of the things that we've incorporated in it will provide that purpose. In fact, the, like the cul-de-sac that we designed at the, at the end of the existing Gilbert Street Extension will actually have removable battlements in it so that emergency vehicles could... Will actually have removable pollards in it so that emergency vehicles could cross all the way across the trail to get to Smith Street as a second means of egress. It's not something that's been a requirement of the DOT or the planning board, but we felt that it was something that made sense for the village. The, you know, there are, there may be building code issues to have a second means of access, depending on the size of the building, and it's a sprinkler building, so I'm not sure offhand that it's where that makes it. But by default, that happens.
I mean, that might be a way to explore this, to get this resolved between, I guess, the town board and the planning board. Hey, let's restrict this traffic, this is not the primary road, the other road is a primary, and like I said, let's get it done, and hopefully, you know, you can work this out, and everybody's happy.
Thank you.
I'm glad you're not the devil in disguises. You're a good guy. I believe in your sincerity. Maybe the answer is this five-year notch that the town board is pressuring. Maybe you could pressure the Cardone and the town board to relook at that, if we have to have the village, if people come and ask the town board to relook at that five-year plan.
I believe-
As an ignorant novice, it seems from all the argument tonight-
Yep.
That if that five-year is corrected for the Y, and we got the board behind the change in that, things could work, but I need you to put pressure on Mr. Cardone and the town board.
Mr., I don't know if you remember Mr. Mayor-
You can, thank you, Mr. Doy.
Councilman McGinn was here speaking on behalf of the YMCA two months ago. Do you remember that? And he did, well, he did, yes, February 18th, that's right, Ross. He did state that the town board would be willing to have another conversation regarding the egress, that there may be something else that they can do, so.
And I think, you know, you probably want to hear from all of us, I think we can all agree, we know that the Y has great programs, and we've all talked about safety, and when you think about it, it does make the most sense to go out that town road and not have to even cross over the Heritage Trail. And I know, you know, we love the Y, and it's not, it's not all about the Y, it's about everyone that lives in the village, and people that don't live in the village that still use our Heritage Trail. We have to be safety, we have to be safe, and we have to think about our safety. And I think the easiest solution would be the five-year lease with the town. You know, again, there were maps that we just saw recently that had other ideas that were never shared to us. So, it's only been a couple of months that we were asked to just cross over the Heritage Trail, and it's not that easy to just say, "Hey, let's cross over the Heritage Trail." There's a lot to take into consideration. And I do applaud this board and Mr. Dwyer with all of his heart that he has put into this, and it is disheartening when we hear about all the rumors, and, you know, it kind of makes us sound like we're heartless when it's the complete opposite, that we're putting our heart into it, and we're thinking about families and our community.
I've got a question.
Come on, please.
What about the parking lot? Do people call the guy parking lot?
So, let me talk about the parking lot, if you don't mind. So, there's actually, I was told, and I'll take this at face value, there's 18 crossings on the trail between Middletown and here in Harriman, and 16 of them came with the railroad before automobiles were built. And they've learned through crossgates coming down, or whatever safety mechanism might have been available at the time, and they've come and done their thing, and they've coexisted, South Street, Middletown, I forget the road up in Goshen somewhere, and they've done their thing. There's two spots that aren't like that, and one of them you just mentioned, the parking lot. Now, the parking lot is county-owned, as is the trail, and when the train line ended its local routes and became a more generalized route, more and more traffic was coming into the village of Monroe, and they were trying to figure how they're going to, where they're going to put all these cars. So, they built that parking lot, and it included, what you're saying, that trail crossing right there. That was their ability to do it. I'm sure they didn't consider what we're talking about right now necessarily. I know somebody else mentioned earlier about Chester. At one point, when Chester was building, that Chester Academy. Absolutely, there's a lot of them, a lot of them. And I said this-
That's a big number of them.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know what the traffic count is, but I can tell you that I ran a charity bike race for many years, and that crossing right, South Street, we used to have two people on both sides manning that, so I'm familiar with what you're talking about. But my point is this, if you're a commuter in the city on a bus, you pull into that spot, I did many years ago, you're on a 642 out of here, that parking lot, for the most part shuts down, it goes fallow. Seven o'clock at night, it's like the lottery's going on. Oh, no, no, I get it. What I'm trying to portray is this, I'm just trying to say, as you mentioned, that one there and Chester Academy, at one point, the county wanted them to actually consider putting a ramp over what would be the bus and car access into Chester Academy. It was like a million-dollar cost of doing it. Eventually, they worked out their differences. Myron Kemenet's here tonight could probably speak about it, but what I'm saying, that's the only two where that instance really would apply to what's happening right here right now. The other 16 came with the railroad, and the car was invented, and it came after, and they coexisted.
So, that's-
Yes, absolutely, no argument. I'm with you 100 percent.
Yep.
Absolutely.
There's no issues, but-
Yeah. And I'm just saying, like, let's think about Chester Academy, those kids at the high school, I know Monroe Berry, I think they're up at 5:00 in the morning, and they're on a bus, and they're in class at 6:30. At that point, that building, for better or whatever, is pretty shut down, there's not a lot of traffic. If you've ever been up to Monroe Berry High School, you pull in there, you're looking around, you think the school's closed, nothing's moving, there's cars there, but nothing's moving. And it's the same way with Chester Academy. The Y, though, is a 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM product, it's constant movement, there are highs, lows, there's 10 cars, five cars, one car, 30 cars. Saturday morning, I had to go to a meeting, I quit, I looked over the bridge-
There's no cars passing, oh, you're not-
Absolutely.
And, and-
You're right. Yes, I'm with you. I agree with you. Listen, you had no argument out of me. This is not an ideal situation. I'm just saying that, given what we have to deal with now, and given the dynamics of the rail crossing, 17M, I'm not concerned about Wally's and the laundromat. They said, should this not happen, they would cut it off with a curb. Good, go for it. That's not why I'm here on this?
I want to correct you.
Sure.
It's all stop traffic, cars, the barriers, the curbs control whatever. It's yours.
All right, but here's my point. Let me, listen, you may be right, but we have a ballot, a bollard-
And I know I'm right.
Yep, okay. So, there's a bollard over on the revamped Mill Pond Lake Street? Okay. So, a guy was trying to make that 135-degree turn from Mill Pond onto Lake Street, put the bollard down like it was a piece of candy. It's gone, it's still down. All that's left is a little piece of steel on the bottom, hollow core.
Was it all right?
Well, I got to believe, you know, Gary, I'm only assuming it was, but you know what? I got to believe that voice contracting is a reputable firm, that they did what they were called to on the specs by the design engineers, a lot of people involved in that, Mr. Ali, that's his world. I don't want to debate that, but I can tell you this, if you have nothing there, the opportunity, it's like up on the 208 Bridge going across, when that was built, I came into a planning board meeting, it was a planning board meeting, I don't even remember, it might have been an informational meeting for the DOT, and one of the things I asked for was to put the sidewalk back that the old bridge had, because that afforded them an opportunity of eight inches of a curb length, where a car is going to be really challenged to jump that as opposed to nothing. And if somebody's just walking, and a lot of people walk through that bridge to get to the other side, and I just think, there's a fighting chance. You look over at Smith Clover Park, the sidewalks are below the street grade with no impede, nothing to impede anybody from doing anything, including water.
But I said, curbs are not there to stop cars. People, off the curb board line, depression in the board line.
Right.
Not there to stop cars.
Well, yeah, yeah, I get, yeah.
So, you can put up these exits over here. You get some people coming in right away.
So, so this exit, this driveway you're referring to, right?
Yeah.
This should be closed. You get no argument out of me. But you know what? If we're going to close it, we have to come up with a design, and we have to come up with ways of getting this traffic that comes in and how it funnels back out. It's kind of built the way it is, it's just like the 208 traffic, it's there since 1930.
It's the way it is, and I think it's, all the stoplights traffic, I think it's the way it is.
Yep. I get it.
Am I wrong?
No, you're not wrong. I, my challenge, my challenge is this, the four points that I made based on the traffic light will not, based on my four points, the traffic light will only stop the traffic so that traffic can come by in two directions.
Are you an engineer?
No, Gary, I'm not. I'm nobody, I'm nobody. I put a left shoe on and a right shoe on in the morning.
Exactly.
Right, but I have to, as the CEO of this corporation, I am being asked to weigh in on an application of what they would like to do.
You're a representative, you're a professional.
Well, and I am, and I am.
Yes, my name's Steve Reich.
Yes, sir.
I just want to thank you for the positive things that we heard tonight.
Sure.
With that, you gave us four main issues.
Yep.
You gave that to the community, you gave that to the people here, and I think they heard you. And I think we all have to work and move forward to make that happen. I haven't heard anything from the police on what can be done to move traffic through there safely. There's going to be a stop sign at the intersection where the trail is, there's going to be a traffic light a couple hundred feet away from that. I just heard tonight that a study was done, and 90 percent of the traffic that's coming in and out of the Y is going to be going through the Gilbert Street Extension.
No, through the traffic light.